Rub it on.
I need to get one of the... Everybody's here, good. One minute, one minute. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting Wednesday, July 12th, at 2023 at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and would you please join us in the pleasurable audience? Thank you very much. Can we have a roll call, please, Allison?
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Newton.
Present.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Monague.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here.
Thank you very much, Allison. Next on tonight's agenda, item three, reconsideration of June 28, 2023 City Council Meeting. A request for license to occupy right-of-way on Northwest Dover Lane, Director Bailey.
Hello. Okay, so if you would give me just a few minutes, I would like to tell a story.
Go for it. You have the floor.
Okay. Once upon a time, in the very recent past, a property owner in Albany came to staff and asked about putting a gate across the public right-of-way adjacent to their property. The owner used the public right-of-way to get onto their property, even though the city had not built a city road, it was public right-of-way. And in this instance, we did not have plans to build a road on this right-of-way anytime in the near future, and the right-of-way was blocked. So there was no current way to drive a vehicle through this right-of-way adjacent to this property. The reason the property owner wanted to build a gate was because there was another Albany resident who lived down the street who would come onto the right-of-way and bother the property owner. They would have words, the property owner began to feel threatened, and they thought that if they could build a gate, they could keep this particular individual out, and it would resolve the problem. Of course, it would keep everyone else out as well, except for them. We occasionally need to get into this right-of-way to do maintenance and to have access for public vehicles, and they agreed to allow the city to get through the gate whenever we needed to and sign a revocable license to occupy. So because we did not plan to build a street there, and there was no outside pressure in this neighborhood to build a street there, it wasn't needed for traffic flow in this area, staff supported their request. So we came to the City Council, and the council ultimately voted not to grant the license to occupy. The reason from the council was because the public right-of-way existed for the use of all of the public, and that the adjacent property owners who were using this public right-of-way only for themselves were essentially expanding their private property onto public property without owning it. The council wanted the right-of-way open to at least pedestrian traffic, so not only did this owner not get permission to build this gate across the public right-of-way, the council directed staff to get rid of all of the obstructions out of all of the right-of-way. This situation I'm talking about is the Vine Street right-of-way. So along the Albany-Santee M Canal, we have right-of-way on either side for a one-lane road. From Third to 12th Avenue, that right-of-way has, over time, been blocked by adjacent property owners at various places, and to various extents, somewhat with, some with like shrubbery and plants, some people put gates and fences across it, some people built structures in the right-of-way, and the city never exerted its right to its right-of-way, and over decades, literally decades, it became more and more obstructed. So that was our direction from council, and we had staff who went out and got all of that stuff, including a building, out of the right-of-way. So even though we're not building a road through that right-of-way, it is now clear and can be walked, at the very least. So now, back to this request. That situation is very similar to the current request. The current request is to put a gate across a city right-of-way on an unimproved road that is going to resolve a neighbor-to-neighbor problem. The only place that this situation differs is that in the case of Dover Avenue, there is increasing pressure to construct that road. That area of North Albany is being built out. There are multiple additional households that exist in that area, and Dover Avenue is one of only two roads that provide a direct connection between Scenic and Crocker in North Albany. So our recommendation remains not to approve this license to occupy. We have a couple of reasons. One, as a previous council noted, the public right-of-way exists for use of all of the public. So while this right-of-way is not improved for car travel and not intended to be used by cars right now, there is access for pedestrians. So in order to support that, our proposal is to place rock along the right-of-way, which will help with pedestrian access, and delineate the difference between the right-of-way and the adjacent private property to try to help avoid potential future conflicts. That would connect the west end of the unimproved section to the eastern portion of Dover, which is drivable. The second reason is to provide a consistent understanding and application of the tool of license to occupy. That might not seem important, and it might seem counter to the value of considering each situation on its own merits, but from a staff perspective, the merits of the Vine Street situation lent more towards granting a license to occupy than this one, and yet we got the opposite direction. If we received the opposite direction again, now where this right-of-way could be obstructed, it creates uncertainty among staff and the public, and it would seem to open the door for the Vine Street property owners to come back and ask to reoccupy the right-of-way that we just recently got them all out of. And I would just offer that, from a staff perspective, confusion on public policy is not good. Finally, if you do want to grant this license to occupy, then it needs to be revocable, they're all revocable, and it should just be clear that we will be revoking it in the near future. The Transportation System Plan, which is the master plan for the transportation system in Albany, is going to be updated beginning later this year. There's a lot of driving factors of why that's happening, but part of that TSB update, the TSB update looks at the entire city, and we'll be looking at this section of Dover, and because it will function as a connector between two arterials and major collector streets in town, it's likely to be classified as a minor collector, and the project to finish building that road will be SDC eligible, and so it's likely to be listed in the TSB as a future project, and then in the capital improvement plan in the very near future as needing to be built. So the license to occupy will need to be revoked before that work can happen. So that's the end of my story. Either way, we need a motion and a vote so that we can have direction and give the property owners their, the decision, so we can move forward.
Mayor and Director Bailey, if I may, just...
Go ahead.
To add to that, and thanks for the very good summary, Chris, but to resolve a neighbor-to-neighbor dispute through depriving the rest of the public of right-of-way seems far less preferable to me than to refer them to mediation, as you heard last time, which is available through neighbor-to-neighbor right across the street, and the price is certainly right for that mediation.
Thank you. Counsel, any discussions or questions for Director Bailey? Counselor Novak?
So I, I don't have a question, but I would like everyone to know that I spoke with the chief of police, because I found in my notes that the police had said they don't want that area blocked off with the gate, even though the gentleman had explained that there's a box that they can get through. So I spoke with her, and she said that that is a delay in case of an emergency, even though they would have access through the box, and it could be potentially life-threatening. And I, my heart breaks for the situation with the neighbor-to-neighbor dispute, and I, you all, maybe you remember what I said last the other day, or maybe you don't, but I wanted them to have that, but now in light of what the chief of police has said, I think it's probably best, I'm gonna change my, I've changed my mind based on, on her concern, and I pray with all my heart that they will take advantage of pre-mediation. So that's what I wanted y'all to know.
Thank you, Counselor Novak. Any other counsel who'd like to make a comment or ask a question to Director Bailey?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Is there a motion?
I would move to deny the request for a license to occupy on the property on Dover Lane.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye to deny the access.
Aye.
Aye.
We have six, yes votes. Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you, Director Bailey, and thank you for explaining the whole situation.
Sure, and we will reach out to the property owner and talk about mediation as well.
Okay, thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding amendments to the Albany Comprehensive Plan Map and ZONI map related to the East Albany Plan regarding Plan Files CP-04-23 and ZC-02-23. The applicant is the City of Albany Community Development Department. I call to order this public hearing at 6:11 PM. If, if you wish to testify, there were two options available, which were described in the council's agenda in the notice, notice materials. At this time, I call for a reading of the meeting procedures by Project Planner Anne Catlin.
Thank you, Mayor, and I realize I forgot to print those off. Can I borrow yours for a minute?
Of course.
Okay, for those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards and review criteria in the Conference of Plan and Development Code, which you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the City Council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond.
Can I have my copy back? Thank you. At this time, I call for a staff report by Project Planner Anne Catlin.
Thank you. While I get my PowerPoint up, we are here because I forgot to add a suggestive motion to the East Albany Area Plan motions when you were evaluating those a couple months ago in May. So just to remind you of what the plan was doing, and it's still fresh in your minds, I'll skip through it, but we did receive a property owner request on April 11th, and you had a public hearing on April 12th, and staff and the consultants evaluated that property and request, I'm just gonna skip over right to that, to consider not changing the Conference of Plan map and to consider rezoning the property. And I mentioned that in my staff deliberation on April 12th, but I forgot to include it in your May motion. So we're here to give you an opportunity to discuss this, and we, the Planning Commission didn't have an opportunity to do that because it came in after their meeting, and we did hold a hearing with Planning Commission, and they are recommending approval of this. So just to remind you what the situation is, back up here, the, the East Albany Area Plan is looking at ways to reduce, to provide more transportation choices, reduce vehicle trips, provide commercial and other services near adjacent residential neighborhoods, and, you know, do a lot of other things, encourage smart development. So this property is on Dunlap Avenue, which is sort of near the intersection of Interstate 5 and Knoxby Road. It is north, this property actually is 3592 Dunlap, and it is bisected by Burkhardt Creek. So we are proposing that, initially, that the corner that is on the east, northeast side of the creek be designated Village Center on the Conference Plan, and actually, that has happened, and then that the zoning be mixed-use commercial. And because I forgot to include this motion for your consideration, that zone change wanted to affect on July 1st. So what the current, what the former Conference Plan designation was general commercial, and the former zoning was regional commercial. This is about 1.25 acres, and the regional commercial zone is really intended for large footprint commercial developments, but the community commercial zone, which is a compatible zone with the former Conference Plan designation, would allow for a variety of uses, including residential and smaller-scale uses. So we feel that the request to rezone it to community commercial, but retain the former Conference of Plan designation would, in essence, comply with the intent of the East Albany Area Plan. So what the proposal is, now that it's already been rezoned and redesignated, is to change the Conference of Plan designation from Village Center back to general commercial, which is what it was, and then rezone it from mixed-use commercial to community commercial. So it's just for a small area that's about 1.25 acres. You read the staff report in your packet, and similar findings to the East Albany Area Plan, but there were a lot of reasons that we did the East Albany Area Plan, changing conditions and needing to address connectivity, housing, and transportation choices. This specific request will not impact really anything related to that, it's very small, but we do feel it's consistent with all the goals and policies in the Conference of Plan related to urbanization and economic development, that kind of thing. So we recommend, and the Planning Commission recommends your consideration of approval for this request.
Okay.
Any questions?
Do any counselors have occurring fine questions regarding the staff report?
Thank you.
There's none, thank you. We will now be taking public testimony. If anyone wishes to enter exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe it and then pass it, present it to the city clerk. There's none. I will call on those who registered to speak first, followed by those who did not register, refer to the public hearing, here we go, right here, we have Brittany Randall has signed up to speak in the affirmative. Welcome, Ms. Randall.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and counselors. I don't intend to repeat what Anne said, I think she was very thorough. We also submitted a letter that's in your packet, and I just wanted to make myself available in case you had any questions for me.
Any counselors have any questions? No, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Does any member of the, of the audience wish to speak about the proposed amendments? Please raise your hand if you are attending in person or virtually to be called upon, or if you're attending by phone. Please unmute yourself and state your name, and you will be called upon. Please write your name and address on the sign-in sheet in person, if you're in person. Does anyone online? I don't see anyone. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this topic? Thank you. Does any member, does any staff member wish to respond to the testimony? Since there was none, there will be none of that. Does council have any questions for staff? Thank you. I declare this public hearing closed at 6:19 PM. Thank you very much. Does the city council wish to discuss these amendments? Thank you. There is an ordinance for your consideration on page five of the council packet.
Actually, there's an ordinance on, the recommendation is the ordinance that's, that's reading on page four in the packet.
My numbers must be off. Motion for the council considerations are on the dais. The council like to make a motion?
I move that the City Council adopt the ordinance that would amend the Albany Comprehensive Plan Map and Albany Zoning Map for approximately 1.25 acres of the northeast portion of 3592 Dunlap Avenue Northeast, as described in Planning Files CP-0423 and ZC-0223 and the ordinance. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the June 12, 2023 staff report, and the findings in support of the application made by the City Council during deliberations on this matter.
So, does somebody have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I skipped the, would the city attorney read, please read the ordinance in title only. Are you gonna, you gonna serve that role?
An ordinance, amending ordinance number 4836, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan map, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Zoning Map and Development Code, by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map and adopting findings.
Thank you. Now, counselor, would you, would you, council like to make a motion? Please go ahead and repeat the motion. Go back on track.
Just repeat that or say this same thing again?
Go ahead and repeat the motion, please.
I move that the City Council adopt the ordinance that would amend the Albany Comprehensive Plan Map and Albany Zoning Map for approximately 1.25 acres of the northeast portion of 3592 Dunlap Avenue Northeast, as described in Planning Files CP-0423 and ZC-0223 and the ordinance. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the June 12, 2023 staff report, and the findings in support of the application made by the City Council during deliberations on this matter.
You have a second?
Second.
Now, would a counselor like to make a motion to read the ordinance in a second time in title only?
I would move to read the ordinance a second time by title only.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed say no? Thank you. And so, would you please read the second time in title only?
And an ordinance, amending ordinance number 4836, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan map, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Zoning Map and Development Code, by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map and adopting findings. Would the council like to adopt the motion?
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Is there a motion, the motion and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed say no? Thank you. A legislative decision of the City Council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days of following the adoption of an amendment or a new land use regulation, the director shall forward the Department of Land Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted ordinance and findings. Thank you. So back, next item on the agenda is business from the public. Does anyone sign up for the public? Okay, we have somebody. Business from the public, Director Lisa Grotto from Albany Downtown Association. Sorry I stole your thunder.
Good evening. As the mayor said, I'm Lisa Grotto. I'm the executive director of the Albany Downtown Association. Just wanted to give you a quick monthly downtown update. Wanted to let you know that our 125th Downtown Crazy Days was very successful. We had lots of people here for the four-day event. We had 10 businesses and 10 restaurants open on Sunday, and lots more opened during the previous days. So lots of great sales and lots of people came to town, and First Friday, which was in the midst of that, was quite successful as well. The public has spoken, and the one movie that we'll be doing this year will be Princess Bride, that will be on August 11th, and it will be on the back of the Eagles, where we showed our movies by Moonlight for the first 11 years. You'll find a feature on Meet the Neighbors, which we called Dream Spaces. It's contractors, designers, carpet, and other fun things for your home and to make things nicer. There's also a nice volunteer spotlight on the West Albany High School interns that helped us throughout the spring and all the projects they did and their college plans. There are still a few things left coming up. This Sunday, July 16th, there's a disc golf event supporting muscular dystrophy, and that is the National Association of Letter Carriers, Branch 959, and the Disc Golf Club of Albany is holding that. That is over in Bryant Park, but it's adjacent to downtown, so I wanted to mention it. Also, I wanted to mention that we have an upcoming event that the Downtown Association is hosting in conjunction with the city. This is our Downtown Connections event. It will be on Monday, July 31st, and it'll be held here in the council chambers. It will be on Monday, July 31, and it'll be held here in the council chambers. And it will be an introduction to the different departments of the downtown that a business or building owner might want to know about so that they can successfully improve their building interior, exterior, and understand the process and for it to go smoothly. Gallery Cala Puya celebrated their 10th anniversary on Friday night, and the Monteith House has set summer hours and has some events coming up. The historic home tours are set for Saturday, the 29th, so if you would like to go see the historic homes, yes, the trolley and the horse run carriages will be running. So that's what's going on downtown. And again, we're excited to work with our city partners coming up on this educational piece.
Thank you so much, Director.
Thank you.
I will tell you, I attended the Gallery Cala Puya. It was fantastic, so thank you for doing that.
And if anybody wants a hard copy of the newsletter, I've got some copies here, and there's also, it's up on our website.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, any other, anyone in chambers like to speak to the council during business from the public? There are none, thank you very much. Award of, next on your agenda item is award of contracts. Purchase of Lee Boy 7000 C Asphalt Paving Equipment. Airport Transportation Manager, Rob Romeo, pages 21 and 22 of your packet.
Good evening, councilors. Mayor Johnson, I'm here tonight to ask for your approval of a purchase of a Lee Boy paver through Sourcewell, a cooperative purchasing network. The City of Albany is a member of Sourcewell and can benefit from its buying power with significant cost savings without reducing competition, exempting the city from conducting its own competitive bidding process. So a really neat feature that we were able to use Sourcewell. Our existing paver is wearing out. We've had it for 21 years. The parts, some of the issues we're dealing with with the pavers, the parts are hard to get. The company that made this paver no longer makes pavers, so parts are pretty much non-existent to replace, and it's just very difficult to, I mean, I have to rely on my guys to fab a lot of the parts, and they're amazing when they do that, but it's getting to the point where I'm afraid we're going to get stuck on a patch with this paver. So the propane burners don't heat evenly, so it makes it very difficult to do a nice smooth patch and be proud of what we do. Some of the hitch arms that we have to do, we have to hook into the back of the hubs on our dump truck, and it's very time consuming. Makes it just really hard to be efficient with this because we have to basically pull the dump trucks in, and we have to deal with the hitch arms, move them out, and it just, it's, it makes us less efficient. And with a new paver, such as the Lee Boy 7000, it's going to be very versatile and has very many upgrades, or upside specifically, doesn't have any hitch arms, so it's making us more efficient in that regard. Lee Boy is a very reputable company. They've been around since 1964. Parts are easy to come by to make repairs. It just makes us a lot more, more efficient on our minor pavement repairs and patches throughout the city. So this would be a wonderful purchase for the City of Albany for just making us able to get out and do these minor repairs efficiently. So this purchase of this equipment was budgeted in budget, the biennium 2023 through 2025 with the street maintenance replacement fund. So that's basically all I have, and if you guys have any questions, feel free to.
Council, any questions? I have Councilor Kupczynski first, and then Councilor Smith.
Does the old machine have any resale value whatsoever to anybody other than scrap?
I would imagine it's, you know, there's a lot of contractors out there that might be interested. So yeah, we'd definitely put it on, on the block. I don't know if it would be right away. It might be a year or two before we do something like that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Smith?
Thank you. I was contacted by a constituent today who had questions, so on his behalf, I will ask them. How often do we use the paver?
Quite, I would say quite a bit, and once we get going in the season, right now, we're dealing with like a lot of the utility patches and the smaller patches that we maintain with like the water crew repairs and stuff. But when there's significant damage to roads, base failures, we'll pull out the paver, and it's quite a bit in the summertime, and significant amounts of time. I mean, we're, we're going to come to council here, I think, you know, with, you know, funding issues and sources to see where we go to, you know, we're small, my crew's eight guys, and we use it significantly throughout the summer.
Okay. How big a hole can it fill? It looks like a great big machine that would cover a big area.
They can spread out to 13 feet and, and do a long patch. And, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of, you know, variables that come into redoing a whole street, and those are things we're going to discuss, I think, in the near future of, you know, what we're capable of doing, because there's a lot of requirements with ADA, you know, you get into, you have to, if you're going to, you know, different menus, venues of like maintenance versus reconstruct, and, you know, we're limited on what we can do, but I think we can get a lot of the bad patches in some of the areas that need to be repaved and, you know, get those taken care of with a paver.
Okay.
Pretty efficient.
Do, how many people are trained to operate this thing?
At this point, none, but I think we're going to hire somebody from a nearby city that we're stealing their paver operator who has experience with this paver. So I, I think we just kind of hit the jackpot with this hire, and, and with this paver, I think we can get some stuff done.
The other question that, that I was asked was, would this, do we use it often enough and make patches that are big enough that it would be more cost-effective to hire a local contractor on an as-needed basis to do this work?
It just depends, I mean, it's, I guess that's subjective, and, you know, you're, depending on your opinion. I mean, it's, it's not the biggest paver. I would love to have a half a million dollar paver like Knife River does, but it's not feasible. We're a small-time, eight guys, we get summer help to help us out, and we can do knockout utility patches, and I think we can be more efficient with a paver. And I think we could do this, you know, these patches often enough to do the patches that need to be taken care of. And we're not going to do a full street, no. Those are where the contractors are going to be viable and come in. We can't, you know, in a sense, compete with them.
And that, that was the question I was asked. It looks, it looked to my caller that like the machine was big enough to do half a street at a time.
It, it could.
Could it?
Yeah. Yeah, you could certainly, we could probably, it just depends, we're limited on personnel, and we don't have, you know, 13 people like Knife River does when they show up to do a patch.
Yeah.
We, we're not capable of that. But for us to do, you know, whatever base failure there is in a street, I think this gives us the opportunity to excavate, to come in and do the patch and be a lot more efficient with it.
And this is the kind of patching that's going to last longer than fell in a pothole in, in an alligatored street, for example? Because that's going to pop out again?
Yep.
Yeah.
And, you know, just so, I mean, everybody understands, we're going to have potholes. Our streets are falling apart, and that's just the nature of the streets. And you're going to see the potholes, everything starts blowing up, and it's just like, oh my gosh, and, you know, November, October, November, you're just going to see tons of potholes. But right now, you don't see as many because you, you fill them with, the coal mix that we use is very good, and it heats up and it kind of bonds into the streets, and so you're not going to see a lot of potholes now. You'll see them still, but I think those are things that you start seeing in the, you know, spring or winter time and after a cold freeze thaw and everything. But yeah, so I think, you know, we can be a lot more efficient with a paver, and I know the City of Corvallis has the very exact same paver.
Thank you for your time.
You bet.
Under the councilor?
Just a follow-up, because that never crossed my mind until whoever spoke with Councilor Smith mentioned it. So it is actually more worthwhile financially to invest this $165,000 for a replacement paver that's not 21 years old than it is to hire local companies to go up and down wherever things are bad and, and fix it?
Well, street maintenance is very expensive, and I think you're about to find out how expensive it is in the next few months when we start proposing funding.
Yeah, I figure it must be not good because our streets are in poor shape, as you mentioned.
You start looking at the trucks, the buses, Amazon, garbage trucks, and the weights that.
Here comes Director Bailey.
Our little, little residential streets are.
I think you want to add something?
You know, not built for. So it, it'll be interesting to see, you know, what happens in, you know, funding, and everybody wants good streets, right? They cost money.
Rob's doing a fantastic job, and I feel like he could talk about streets, and I would listen for like an hour and a half. The only thing I want to add is on cost efficiency. So just an example, you know, when the water crew goes out and replaces a service line, there's like a trench, and it gets temporarily filled with this, it's called, you know, cold patch or hot patch, and a lot of times in the wintertime, that'll just pop out, and then it has to be, you know, formally paved. So the water crew used to go out for bids to pave trench patches annually, and I don't remember how many years ago, probably six, six, seven years ago, could not get an asphalt contractor to bid because there are these little bitty jobs, there's really not a lot of payback. And so we went for a long time, and you probably don't know, but we got a lot of complaints about these trenches that were falling apart. So essentially, water contracts with streets to do this paving. So streets is generating streets revenue from the water fund to do their paving for them in addition to these much larger, you know, half-block, half-street sections that really need to be done. So the, just the savings that streets is going to generate from water would pay for this paver two years maybe, and that doesn't even count for the large, you know, half-block sections that they're able to get done that will, will help the community. So definitely a worthwhile investment, and, you know, we can talk, we will be talking a lot about streets beginning August 7, so get ready for it.
Councilor, councilor?
So are we currently not patching some streets because we have the older paver? Are we unable to do all the work that we need to do because of we have an older paver?
No, we're, we're patching.
Or we're just anticipating that it just needs to be?
As much as we can. I mean, it's, you know, we're overwhelmed, we're not just, you know, asphalt people. We do striping and, I mean, ditches and, you know, trees, sidewalks.
You're, so your constraint is mostly staff at this point? Okay. All right, thank you.
It's quiet over here. So I have just one question, a couple of questions. One is, what's the timeline for, you say yes tonight, how long's it going to take you to get it?
I, I think it's probably six months out.
About six months out? And then what is the expected life expectancy of this new machine? 10 years, 12 years, 20?
I, I think, you know, until we outgrow it would be my guess. So I mean, it could be 15 years, I think.
Okay, so we'll definitely get our money out of it. Okay, council, I have a resolution. Does anyone like to make a motion?
I would move to award the contract as presented to purchase the new Lee Boy 7000 C Asphalt Paver.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you for your presentation, Rob.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Be sure to bring it to the library for, so all the little kids can check it out later.
Yes, that's a good idea. That's, that's a fantastic idea. So next on tonight's agenda, adoption of a consent calendar?
I move we adopt the consent calendar.
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you, council. Next on the agenda is the business from the council. I started with, last time I started with Councilor Novak, I'll start with Councilor McGee.
Yeah, so I'm a Barbie collector, for those who don't know. So I'm partnering with the Picks to Display my Barbie collection on July 20th, when the movie comes out. I only collect the black Barbies. So it'll be all of them, but I have some from the 80s, the 70s, I think, have a huge collection, and most of them are holiday. Some are limited edition, and I also will be giving out information regarding Kitty Black Perkins, who was the woman who created the black Barbie inspired by Diana Ross in 1979.
Thank you, Director. Man, councilor?
Yeah.
Councilor Kupczynski?
I encourage anybody who hasn't been down near the carousel recently, looking at the, look at the mural that's going up across the street on the wall of the Chamber of Commerce. It's coming along very, very nicely, and it, phenomenal artist that's doing that. She's been doing it over the area, overseas, et cetera, et cetera. And it's, it's going to be a very impressive mural when it's completed, so take a walk down or drive down and gawk at it. Okay? Thank you.
Councilor Newton?
Yeah, I just actually had a question from a constituent that I wanted to bring up. You know, I'm not an expert building codes, but I did have fun reading Title 18, but they had a question about what they're calling a Costco canopy. This, the council limited, amended the title to limit the uses of fabric structures to 180 days, like if they were to like a, a pop-up tent in there, like to cover their car as like a makeshift carport. So I just wanted to know if we had any clarification, or if there's anyone that could.
We may have somebody here.
Yeah, want to phone a friend on it.
So if I understand your question is, with the building code and how it addresses, addresses fabric structures?
Yes. Title 18.
We, we may have to look into that and get back to you.
Unless Matthew wants to come on down.
Director Rogers, you have the floor? Like the tie, by the way.
I was about to say the same thing. Nice tie.
So I, I'll preface this by, I'll have to get back to you on some specifics. I know that BCD or Building Code Divisions, we're looking at building codes around this. Our Title 18 doesn't directly talk about the tube and tarp style structures. I mean, they're, as long as they're under a certain square footage, they are permitted if they're outside of the required setbacks. So it's, can they be used for camping? Is that the question?
Not for camping, like for his vehicle.
That, they are, like I say, if they're under 200 square feet, then they're generally don't require a building permit, and they don't require any sort of land use application if they're kept outside of the, or outside of the required setbacks. So if the, generally in most houses, if you're seeing it in front of the house, chances are it's probably in the front yard setback. But we, that's why we have a compliance program, so we, people can submit complaints to our community development department, and we will investigate and help coach people on where those structures can go.
Excellent, thanks.
Thanks for bringing something back.
I'll, I'll just email them and loop them with my constituent.
Thank you.
Just to note, the only issue on any of those that I've been aware of is if they need to be anchored properly because wind can take them, just flip them real, real easily.
Correct.
Thank you. Councilor Novak?
I was contacted today by a constituent, and it has to do with an issue that's already arisen where we have the camping, but I'm not going to say anything further, speak to it any further this evening, so I have something, but that's all I have.
Can you send it to appropriate staff, maybe they can address the word?
I hope to do that, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Councilor, what do you?
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilor Smith?
I have experience with a Costco garage that I had on my property briefly 20 years ago. It was one foot too close to the fence of the neighbor property, and it was removed at the request of the city. So be aware. Dark moment in, on my street, but they eventually sold their house and moved away. So anyway, I'll go, go back to city business. Let's see, I had the pleasure this afternoon of spending two good hours with Councilor McGee, Mayor Johnson, Sophie and Matt. Am I leaving anybody out?
I think so.
I think that was.
I think that's.
Yeah, at the Phoenix Inn with the Albany Visitors Association as part of their strategic planning process. And about 25 people in the room, we got an update on the strategic plan that they have been working on for months now. Really interesting information about who visits Albany and what they do when they're here, and how the Visitors Association is. here and how the Visitors Association is polishing up their, their procedures and, and looking to the future of how to bring even more people to town and had, find things for them to eat and do and have fun while they're here. So that was, that was an interesting afternoon.
Excellent.
Yep.
So I had, this weekend, the ninth, was the Spring Hill Car Show for, on, in support of the Honor Flight, South Valley Honor Flight at the Bryant Park. It was 216 cars, several thousand people came through throughout the day. And it was an amazing experience meeting all the veterans and, and these beautiful cars. And the mayor's choice, the vehicle that I chose was this beautiful candy apple red, 1954, a Bel Air red, gorgeous. But one of the things that really moved me about this vehicle, the gentleman that did the interior was a senior, 70-year-old male in his mid 70s, that when his wife passed away, he actually took upholstery lessons. And it was his first car that was shown in public with his work in it. And it was breathtaking. So if you get a chance, get out to the local car shows, get out to the local events that are happening in town. It's amazing when you meet these fabulous people from all over the state to come here and enjoy Albany. And I hope that we continue to do that with directors for both visitors and our downtown association. It's wonderful when you bring those folks to town. So I thank you very much for that. Again, Counselor Smith talked about the AVA meeting. It was really nice to see them going through their process. They did reference our strategic plan as they built theirs out and so did the ADA. So I think that's a great kind of dovetail into what we as a council did last year. And I'm really happy to see and participate in that process. And Counselor McGee, everyone had input to that and it was really great to hear those, those ideas. And Sophie, thank you all for having, making sure we get there and Director as well. With that, I will shut up and I will talk, ask our city manager to give his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday night, I promised you I would do everything we could to kind of preserve your six-week city council break and we are doing that. We also talked a little bit about how there's some urgency with respect to Water Avenue and the railroad crossings and considering a contract. So that will be, there will be, in order to accomplish both of those, there'll be a short ARA meeting on August 7th, right after our council work session. And that'll help us preserve the next six weeks. The only other thing I had, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you and I will start distributing these things on your behalf.
So thank you very much, Peter. One of the things that I do and all of us do, we read about what we are currently doing as a city council, you know, looking toward the future, historic improvements, infrastructure. And another mayor, a colleague of mine, interested me and shared this with me, a book called 13 Ways to Kill Your Community. It's a great book. I recommend everybody read it. So I bought it for the council, for each member of the council to have a copy of it and also for the executive, the city manager. But I'm, I think that this book was very enlightening for me the first time I read it. So I have my own copy now, but I'm hoping that everybody gets a chance to read this book and some of the things are really enlightening in here. And also the first thing in here is forget about the, forget your water. And so it talks about things through each chapter about public officials and how we do not do certain things. I think this is a really good book for everyone. So thank you very much.
That's all I have, sir.
That's all you have? Thank you so much, Peter. I appreciate that. At this time of recess, so executive session to discuss real property transactions and evaluate the employment-related performance of the public officer in accordance with ORS 192, the point 660, subsection two, sub E, and ORS 192660, subsection two, subsection I, at 650.
Sir, is there any way we could get a five-minute bio break?
Oh, yeah, so cool. Let's do that. I apologize.
Thank you.
Five-minute bio break. Let's do 10. Let's do 10-minute bio break. We'll be 7:10.
Director Bailey, can you come up? Would Council like to give direction to Director Bailey on the first issue we talked about?
I'll make a stab at it. I move that we authorize the Public Works Director to submit a sealed bid for consideration by the Albany School District.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Council like to give direction to Director Holly Rotten. I gotta write that down.
I move that we... I can't remember what she said now. I move that we increase the city manager's salary by 3% and...
Deferred comp.
And...oh, for deferred comp. And that was it, right? Enrolling his car stibern into his salary as...
Presented.
Presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no? You roll call, please.
Counselor Novak.
Aye.
Counselor Newton. To abstain, you really need to announce it before the vote.
Okay.
But you wish to be counted as a yes?
Sure.
Okay. Counselor Kupczynski.
Aye.
Counselor Mondegu.
Aye.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor McGee.
Aye.
That's 6-4.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Next meeting will be Monday, July 24, 2023, at 4:00 p.m. for the work session. Wednesday, July 26, 2023, for the City Council meeting. And I'll thank you very much for being here this evening. Thank you, Director.